Welcome to the May 16th work session of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Present.
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 Present. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Today's we will begin with the public portion where any member of the public may address the board on any topic. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. That'll be followed by bids, draft wireless master plan, the 2023 airport operations update, Boys and Girls Harbor project update, the 2023 summer beach report, and proposed changes to chapter 240. Then we'll, that'll be followed by liaison reports, and we do have a few resolutions to approve today. So without any further ado, is there anyone here which has addressed the town board? Yes, sir. Good morning, Michael. If you'd just please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Michael Daley. I live in Sag Harbor, and I'm co-leader of East End YIMBY. I wanted to come, and unfortunately, I had conflicts in your last two meetings, and I wasn't able to come and express my, my feelings and the support for your ADU legislation that's pending. You know, you, you all have been doing such a terrific job. I, I see and have been watching all of your work sessions on ADUs. You are literally at the forefront of how to apply ADU legislation of any of the towns or any of the villages on the East End. I'm working with the town of Southampton. We're having our first ADU legislation meeting in North Haven on Thursday night, which is very encouraging. Southhold, Shelter Island, every township on the East End is recognizing how important ADUs are, not as something that will solve our housing crisis, but an important component to it. I also know that you're doing it the right way. I've been watching, listening, had some conversations with your planning department as well. I know it'll be done soundly. I know that our groundwater will be protected because the proper use of septic systems and upgrades where necessary will happen. And the Board of Health does not allow things to slip through, so I feel really very, very positive and, and I've been studying this issue and how important ADUs are for over five years. So I just wanted to express my support for this legislation, and I was, I was nauseous when I saw the front page of one of the local newspapers recently. The media loves controversy and to, to quote one person who has some incorrect ideas and some uninformed notions about it is sad, but that's our media. That's what, that's our life. You deal with it every day, right? It's like playing whack-a-mole. And that's what being an affordable housing advocate is too. It's playing whack-a-mole. You know, it's like, oh, I didn't need to be there. I was in the car. I couldn't come and speak. And, you know. And, and then that happens. So I, I don't know how that happens, but it does, and that's just a fact of life that we deal with every day. Couple of interesting points to support your legislation is that AARP says that 22% of Americans will be age 65 or older by 2050. Well, guess what? East Hampton is already at 22%. Thirty-two percent of young adults live at home and not necessarily because they want to. And being a parent who had a young adult living at home, thank God he found a place. But ADUs are one of the tools in the toolbox that are going to help us solve some of these issues. Another interesting point is that 48% of adults are single today, which was only about 25% in 1960. And that 27% of children live with a single parent today. And that was like 5% when I was growing up, and I'm just getting my Medicare card this week, so you congratulate me again. So, America is changing. East Hampton is changing, and one other statistic which was really shocking to me that I just read recently is that if things don't change and if we don't do things around senior housing, including ADUs, the population of homeless seniors is expected to almost triple by 2030 in the United States. And that is a very, very sad fact. So we have to continue moving forward. We have to continue moving forward with all the strategies in the toolbox. We're about to release an 18-point solution bank to all the municipalities for consideration. But you folks have been doing a wonderful job with your all-hands-on-housing. Jeremy has been doing a terrific job in analyzing all the different possibilities and just wanted to share my support.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your work.
Do we have any callers on the line, LTV?
Uh, I'm just gonna double-check this right now, but no, we have no callers on the line.
Okay, Jason, we will move on then to our topics. And first up, we have Jeanie Caroza. She's gonna present bids. Good morning.
First bid we have is the, the remove and replacement of runway 10 Pappy for the East Hampton Airport. The apparent low bidder for that is Baseline King Corporation, the amount $184,000. We have a couple of extensions, the first being supply and delivery of Ford OEM parts. New one's Bay Shore Ford is the existing bidder for that one. Oh, that's the only extension I have. Oh, anyway. Then I have a couple of notices coming up, East Hampton Airport mowing and Fort Hill Cemetery interments and maintenance. And since there's not going to be another board meeting until June 1st, after Thursday's meeting, we have like several bids in between. So hopefully they'll all be successful, and those will be, actually will have South, South Emery pickleball courts, T-shirts and sweatshirts, the specialized bus services for Montauk, and hopefully we'll have a successful second house bid come in. Survey services for Nap Peak Beach, and then the, also we'll have HVAC improvements for the Montauk Playhouse. So if all goes well, we'll have all those accepting on the 1st.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeanie?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanie.
Jeanie. That brings us up to the draft wireless plan. We have Eric Shantz here, who's now our head of housing, but since Eric has shepherded this process through to this point and we're at the finish line. And I believe we also have Elizabeth Harrington and Susan Raybold on the line as well.
Hopefully, they just got the link, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna be laying them in right now. Give me a second. My cursor's acting a little funky, and I'm just getting them in. And so that was Susan Raybold, yes. And who was the second person?
Elizabeth Harrington.
All right, I have Elizabeth Smith here is.
That would be the same person, yes.
Making absolutely sure.
Thank you, Jason.
And all as well.
Hi. So I'm Eric Shantz, the director of housing, although for many years I was with the planning department and reviewed a lot of the, well, almost all of the wireless applications. So I'm trying to help bring this sort of final piece of, of our, our goals here across the finish line, which is the wireless master plan. So just to give the board and the public a reminder, we began this in August of 2022. Cidyscape was contracted and did an invent, a survey of the community to see what people's concerns and needs were regarding wireless. The Cidyscape also did an inventory of all the existing sites throughout the town, even outside of the town's limits where facilities would provide coverage. In the interim, we overhauled the town code extensively, streamlining the process while still keeping standards. And then also what Cidyscape did was identify the coverage gaps throughout the town. Many people in the community know where those coverage gaps are sort of informally, but this was done from a technical, a technical approach. And then basically that, all of that information was compiled and used to formulate this plan. Again, this is a master plan. This is something that ultimately we would like to see adopted by the town board. It would essentially become part of the comprehensive plan specific to wireless. This is the first essentially draft that you're seeing of this document. Obviously, there will be public hearings and, and public input on it. We worked, the town board knows, various town board members were involved in this. The planning department worked hand-in-hand with Cidyscape to try and get as complete a plan as possible, and that is what you're gonna see Cidyscape present in, in just a minute. But just to give you some key aspects of it, basically, so going just back to the, the idea of coverage gaps, we need to fill those coverage gaps. One of the, the primary goal is to provide complete coverage and capacity throughout the town. But in formulating this plan, Cidyscape was directed to fill those coverage gaps or at least make recommendations. Again, the town will not be building any new wireless facilities. That's an important distinction. Private companies, private carriers and tower companies fill those coverage gaps, but this plan is meant to be a guideline for future projects. So what you're gonna see, really the key aspect in here are recommended, you know, potential ways to solve the coverage gap problem, potential solutions. They involve mostly new small cell wireless, those being mounted on utility poles, either existing or new ones, basically in right-of-ways. But for reasons also covered in the presentation, technology mandates that there are a certain number of macro facilities, taller towers and structures that are needed throughout the town. Cidyscape formulated these recommendations, basically trying to minimize the number of macro facilities that we need and also minimize their heights and keep the designs as inconspicuous as possible, but still doing so in a manner that will 100% fill the coverage gaps throughout the town. So you're gonna see a number of maps that represent potential solutions in different areas of town. Again, these are not set in stone. These are not things that the town will be placing new facilities in any of these locations. It's something that is gonna be up to the carriers. But we feel that this document is an important guideline for the carriers and something that the planning board can use when they're reviewing these applications. Again, the planning board will still review all new macro facilities, all new tall mounts, and their standards still apply. So I, I would like everyone to keep that in mind. Also included in the master plan, which has been posted on the, the town website, if anyone is interested in looking, you'll see at the end with the recommendations. There's also some recommendations to streamline the process. A lot of the work has already been done by virtue of adopting the town code amendments, but there are still some in-house things that could be done to streamline review of projects where it's warranted. And then there's also some recommendations on using new technology to address the coverage gap situation in specific, specifically fiber optics, which is something that I will say is not my area of expertise. And I'm sure the board is gonna have questions about that for Cidyscape, and they're prepared to answer those. So that's sort of a brief introduction to this presentation and to this plan. And from here, I will let the Cidyscape.
Thank you, Eric. Jason, we have Susan Raybold and Elizabeth Harrington on the line.
Yes, we do, and they should be hopefully showing themselves soon. We have their presentation up.
Yes. Hi, this is Susan, and let's see.
And Elizabeth, you're muted. Do you want me to unmute you?
No, I'm good. Susan will do most of the talking. I'm here.
Fantastic. Just wanted to double-check.
Thank you.
Yes, and can you, can, you can see my screen for the presentation?
Yes, we can, Susan. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us today.
Yes, indeed. Thank you for having us. We're very excited to be at this point in our project. So as Eric indicated, this is an overview of the project, and I'll be focusing on the gap, the suggested possibilities to fill in the gaps. We did start with the community survey to get information from the citizenry and to find out what their experience is with their current wireless connections. Just a quick overview, we had over, just over 1,600 responses. And the majority of the commentary and responses that we received was that people wanted to improve their cellphone services. They did not want to sacrifice, though, the view sheds and the beauty of the community with the new infrastructure. They wanted to promote greater transparency with the wireless industry with regards to meeting radio frequency compliance standards from the FCC. They wanted to address small wireless build-outs in the right of way and to continue supporting the use of public property for future infrastructure so that you have greater control over where a facility is located and how it is maintained over the course of time. So as Eric indicated, we did an assessment of all the wireless facilities. We went to those sites. We took pictures. We recorded who was there. We made notes. And overall, you have a total of 51 sites. Some of those sites are approved and not built yet. Some were under construction. Some were under review. And of those sites, you also have three that are indicated for removal, and those are shown in red. You have sites 3, 12, and 21. Excuse me, that will eventually be removed.
Can, can you just explain what the difference between a tower and a base station is?
Sure. A tower is a facility that was built for the sole purpose of holding that equipment, wireless equipment. Your towers are typically monopoles, lattice, or guy structures or concealed facilities. You do have some concealed slick sticks where you don't see any of the antenna, but that facility was built just for the equipment. A base station is a structure that was not built for the sole purpose of wireless communications. So rooftop buildings, water tanks, utility poles, those are built for other purposes, but are used for co-location of wireless services. And so those are called base stations. At this time. Mm-hmm. Great question. Thank you. And of course, please interrupt me at any time with any questions. It's always best to address them at the time of the slide that we're on. So you do have more towers presently than you do have base stations. And the three sites that are proposed to be removed are, one of them is a condemned site, one's going to be replaced with a new facility, and actually two are being replaced with new facilities. So from that point of knowing what facilities you have, we focus on which sites are used for personal wireless services. Some of your sites are used for broadcasts. Some of them were used for public safety. And, and those sites don't necessarily have personal wireless service antenna on them. So this map is demonstrating that you have, on those towers that I showed before and base stations, 27 of those sites are used for macro cell facilities, and 13 are used for small wireless facilities. The difference between a macro cell and then, and a small wireless facility is the infrastructure. The macro cell is larger antenna. They can provide greater coverage over a larger service area, and they can accommodate greater network capacity on those sites. They require more ground space for their equipment. And those facilities are, are typically taller, or they are taller. The small wireless facilities have a much smaller antenna configuration. The propagation pattern from the small wireless facilities is less than a mile. It's usually about three-quarters of a mile between handoff sites. And the equipment on the ground or on the tap, on the utility pole is much smaller. A small wireless facility by definition cannot typically exceed 50 feet in height. Most of your small wireless facilities are around 37 feet in height, whereas your macro cells are over 100 feet. And the propagation pattern that's shown here is using the high-frequency coverage. And we are assuming on each of these locations that each provider is on the map. And we do that because we just wanna get a groundwork or baseline of if all the sites were used, how much coverage you would have versus how many gaps. The yellow on the map signifies geographic areas where antenna would be able to penetrate into buildings. That's called in-building coverage. The green shade shows where the signal from the tower, the predicted signal from the tower, would cover in vehicle and probably indoors depending on the type of construction and the type of vegetation around that building. But no guarantees that you would have in-building coverage. Blue represents outdoor coverage that may or may not get into the vehicle, likely not into a building, and then where you have no cover, coverage at all. So for example, here, you don't have any yellow, green, or blue. These areas, definite gap areas, where it's highly unlikely that you have coverage. Now, we know that not every provider is on each site, and so we'll talk about that in just a moment. But once we have those gap areas, we then look at some additional variables. We wanna look at the population density in these areas because that helps us to understand capacity. So there's two parts of network planning. There's initial coverage, and that's just getting the signal out. But the more subscribers you have in a geographic area using their devices, whether it be a tablet, a cellphone, their watch, or all three at one time, the more capacity that's needed in the area. And so when multiple subscribers are using their devices simultaneously, that coverage area will shrink, and it becomes smaller. That's just the way the network works. So the coverage area diminishes the more you have subscribers using the network simultaneously. So we wanna look at the population density so we can see where the highest subscriber rates are typically going to be. So this map shows where in the lighter yellow, you have year-round lower designated people living per square mile between 0 and 500. Where you get into these darker shades, and your darkest shade is, is here. You're looking at 2,000 or more people per square mile. And then the shades in between the darkest and the light is a variation of between 500 and 2,000 people per square mile. We did not have access to data that demonstrates how many people per square mile increases during your higher visitation months, typically summer and fall. So we weren't able to build that in scientifically, although we did take that into consideration in the network planning phase. So this next map shows a comparison between the piece, the number of people per square mile and the number of wireless facilities you have servicing that same census block. And these colors show how even if you have pretty good coverage perhaps on the previous map, because of the number of people per square mile, it shows that you will probably still need facilities in these red areas, the orange areas, and eventually into these light green areas. So we take all that into consideration as we move into the next set of maps. Let's see if I can get to my next map. Well, there we go. So these maps demonstrate targeted areas where we know and highly suspect that there are definite gaps in the areas of greatest need of coverage, meaning new facilities presently. So the areas outlined in red on each of these maps are the most needed areas of new infrastructure. And across the geographic area of the town, we estimate a new need for 10 macro cells and 44 small wireless facilities over the next 10 years. Eight of the macro cells are shown to be in the 100-foot elevation and two in the 140-foot range. The new small wireless facilities are all shown to be around the average 37-foot elevation, which is what you have built out presently. Excuse me.
Susan, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
So when you're doing, you know, the new macro cells, and, and you're at 100 feet and then 140 feet, they can all accommodate all four carriers?
That is correct, yes.
What about small wireless at 37 feet? How many carriers will they be able to handle?
It depends. If it's built as a single-service pole, it's one. If it's built as a multi-tenant pole, then they could handle three or four.
Okay, thank you.
It depends on what the service provider puts in. But so to give you a visual demonstration, these macro cells are needed as the backbone of the wireless network because they provide the most robust signal and the robust coverage and the most robust network capacity. Then the small wireless facilities are usually put in where you need to densify the network. Some small wireless facilities are shown in, and I'll show you here shortly, in parts of the town where the, there was really so much residence, low-density residential and very little public property. So we tried to avoid showing the use of macro cells in those areas, and so you'll see a greater concentration of these types of facilities in those areas. But basically, they work together to provide coverage and capacity throughout the town. So the first gap area we'll look at is Sag Harbor. Sag Harbor has existing sites shown as labels with round icons and numbers. For example, this 1, 2, and 3. And new facilities are shown as either NT for a new macro cell or an NP for a new small wireless facility. So we're estimating it would take a, one new macro cell around the area of NT6 at 140 feet, and one potential new facility in the Sag Harbor NT7 at 100 feet, and then nine new small wireless facilities at the 37, and they're all identified as these NP37s. Some of these sites, like NP38 and 6, they're not highlighted the same because these map, these are actually shown on the Wayne's Cut map. We don't have a way to crop them out, to just zero in on Sag Harbor. So these sites that don't have a bold 2 or 3 or 1, or have a identifier on them like the height, are shown on a different map. You can see we've added the propagation pattern from these proposed sites, so you can see how they work to fill in the gaps that we showed. The next area that we're looking at is the northern, northwest harbor and Cedar Point. And this vicinity does not have infrastructure presently, and we're. And we're proposing that a potential one hundred and forty-foot macro cell would be needed in this vicinity to cover all of this area of Cedar Point. And then an additional five small wireless facilities along this eastern section to provide coverage where there is not coverage now. Eastern Northwest Harbor would, does not have any existing facilities either. And we're showing eight small wireless facilities as potential fill-in sites here because really there's no public property that we could identify as a possible location.
Bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Wayne's Cut area is showing the proposal for a new macro cell at NT nine. And we cannot, bless you, why we could not get this red dot to go around NT nine. It's showing up on the graphic, but when we put it in PDF, it's disappearing. So I apologize, but it will be in the final document that we prepare. And then the new NT ten one-hundred-foot tower is shown here. And I should have explained on the previous map, this red line is sort of showing that we, we're not targeting a specific area where the new facility needs to go. It would need to go somewhere in the middle of this red circle to maximize filling in the coverage for that geographic area. But it's, it's, um, and so I apologize that nine's not showing up. We, we just couldn't figure that out. It was baffling us. And then an additional seven small wireless facilities in the Wayne's Cut area as shown on these dots with thirty-seven foot shown.
Susan, NT nine on that map shows it, while it says in the chart that it's a hundred feet, the, the small types, thirty-seven small, so I think that's just a typo.
Yeah, I already fixed it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't get that graphic.
I've already fixed all that. Thank you.
All right, now the East Hampton, Northeast Hampton, and Amagansett area are showing a proposal of new tower, one hundred feet tall, and no additional small wireless facilities at this time. The Springs fill-in is showing a number of things. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this map. The Site fifteen that's existing, that is the facility at one oh-three Flaggy Hole Road, also known as Camp Blue Bay. That, this, the propagation from this facility is showing the replacement facility. It was an existing unipole and, excuse me. That facility is being swapped out. So the propagation is being shown from the new facility. Site sixteen is the Springs, um, Fire Department. And there was a lot of discussion that perhaps that existing tower may be relocated to a new location that would meet setbacks. If it were put in at a new location meeting setbacks, then this would be the type of propagation pattern that you would get from that site. Site fifteen is not going to serve all of the Springs area by itself. It's too large of an area and there's too much residential, higher density residential development that, in that area, putting greater capacity needs. So we do feel as though you will need to have both fifteen, a site in or near sixteen, and a site at NT three and a site at around the vicinity of NT two.
Susan, can I ask, can I ask a question, Susan?
Yes.
Going back to Northern Northwest Harbor, if NT four was not to be installed, would, it wouldn't, uh, would the Site fifteen be able to be used as coordinations for the, the small cell technology on Northwest Harbor, on Northern Northwest Harbor?
If you were not to insert, if you're not, if you were to take out any of these, then alternatively, you'd be looking at anywhere from four to six, a minimum of four to six, maybe even as many as eight new small wireless facilities because it depends on the topography and the tree canopy in each of those areas.
Thank you.
And the same here with NT three, sixteen, and two. If you were to remove those facilities, if you were to remove all three of those, you'd have a plethora of new small wireless facilities that would be needed to cover that geographic area. They are options, but we were trying to show, um, the least amount of infrastructure that you could, that you would, that would be needed to be put in to get the greatest amount of benefit. So as you remove those and you sub them out, um, it's not a hard, fast equation to like four or six small wireless to one tower because, like I said, of the topography and the tree canopy. We would have to look at that more specifically in each geographic area. But as a rule of thumb, four to six, maybe eight. Your potential fill-in in Napeague Bay would be one new macro wireless facility in the vicinity of NT eight and six new small wireless facilities at the thirty-seven-foot elevation. And then as we move, um, westward, excuse me, eastward towards Napeague Beach, we're just showing one new pole because you already have a number of poles along Montauk Highway that are providing the fill-in. But this area up here north of Montauk Highway near the shoreline needed something, so we're showing the new pole there. And again, here NP two and, um, one, I think you're going to see those, yes, on this West Montauk fill-in map. So in West Montauk, we're showing NP one and NP two as your fill-in. And then in East Montauk, we're showing one, one-hundred-foot new potential macro cell and two small wireless facilities being added in areas where you have, where we anticipate need for capacity.
Susan, just a question on, question on the Napeague Beach map?
Yes.
Uh, Tower twenty-one, which I believe is, almost acts as a small cell technology and there for a long time, that's being removed. Do we know if that's being replaced with anything? And, and, and the only other question, and then the second question for an hour later, we can research it, is to find out where the status of the macro tower that the, that the state is in, uh, was looking to install at Hither Hills also.
Sure, so, mhm, so the Site twenty-one, that facility is on State Park's property and it's been condemned. And so as of the publication, the date of the publication of our maps, there was no indication from the state that they were going to be replacing that tower. So we do not show that on here as a possibility. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And the Site twenty-two is, that's the proposed and, or approved and not built yet height at Hither, see, Hither Hills. And it is shown on this map here as being turned on.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make one, um, one remark here, too. For the small wireless facilities that are along the Montauk Highway, they are only for one provider currently. So there may be, even though we're saying that for fill-in, there may be two or three that may be needed for the fill-in, it would, there may be more that would be needed for the other providers as well.
Right, right. So to put more equipment on those existing small wireless facilities, you'd be either looking at doing an extension on the top of the pole that's been added. And they're allowed to increase the height for one service provider automatically. Or you would be looking at a replacement facility to accommodate multiple providers on those, at those existing locations. Or you would be looking at adding more facilities along that area. But preferably, I think you would want to increase the height by ten feet or swap out the pole to accommodate more providers versus adding more sites in those areas. And so additional recommendations, uh, that Eric mentioned would be to look at these areas where we're proposing new facilities and identify more specifically the acceptable location and infrastructure design that you would want to see developed on those properties. And have that prepared so that as the industry comes in to build out infrastructure in those gap areas, you're being more proactive. And really, that's the point of this plan. The point of this plan is to prepare the community to anticipate where the gaps are.
Susan, can we go over Montauk? I think we skipped over Montauk.
Oh, East Montauk?
It is Montauk, isn't it?
West Montauk.
Can we go over Montauk, both of them?
There's, there's West Montauk.
Okay.
We were showing two new small wireless facilities.
Thank you.
At one and two. And on East Montauk, NT five as a new potential facility at one hundred feet. And Sites forty-five and forty-four for new small wireless.
Thank you.
Right. So the, the point of the plan was really, was to identify your gaps, help you to be proactive and not be cut off guard by sites that may be needed in the future and to help you plan forward how those sites, those areas are going to be filled in. The new ordinance goes a long way in helping to streamline and promote the types of facilities that the community supports most, which is concealed and use existing infrastructure as a first priority before new sites are constructed. But you could take what we've done to another level by identifying acceptable, specific locations on public properties and in the rights of ways for new sites and the type of infrastructure and how you would want it to look so that when the industry comes in, you have that prepared. It is also highly encouraged, I'm hi, I want to highly encourage you to reach out to New York DOT and to share with them your goals and objectives for your small wireless facilities, even in their, in their right-of-way so that there's some coordination between what they permit and what you desire. Because they can go in and permit in, in, in the right-of-way, their right-of-way, the sites. But if you take time to communicate with them and work with them to show what you're trying to accomplish, then perhaps they can also work with you to put in those design standards for the small wireless. We recommend that you prepare a standard lease agreement for the community-owned properties with predetermined terms. I know you already have properties that are owned by the town that have wireless infrastructure on them. So you already have some leases that you can use to develop a standard template. I would go ahead and share that standard template once you finalize it with the industry so that they're prepared for your terms when they come in to use public property. Would also recommend that you meet with fiber providers, excuse me, to find out their maps, to get their maps, map their, the fiber that they have so that you can see where fiber gaps are. And then maybe work together with the, the fiber industry to expand fiber into areas where there is none presently. Fiber is important to provide a robust network. If you don't have fiber to your towers, then they have to put microwave dishes on the tower as backhaul to get a more robust signal from that tower. Your small wireless facilities need fiber to their sites in order to operate. So some of the areas that we show small wireless facilities may not come to fruition if there is no fiber in the right-of-way at the present moment. So it's going to be important for you to be able to identify areas where fiber is present, where fiber is not, and to come up with a strategy to provide that fiber. And so that concludes my presentation. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this project with the town. It's been a great project and I'm happy to entertain any other questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Susan and Elizabeth. Board members have any questions regarding the presentation or the plan?
Just a couple of quick comments on there. Um, it's sort of a, it's interesting to see that in certain areas of Gardner's Island might have better coverage than areas of mainland East Hampton, if we want to call that. You become a little dismayed by that, uh, knowing that the residence, uh, uh, population density is not, not on Gardner's Island. I'm very interested in continuing the small cell technology look on there. I know we've had, uh, we've been pressed recently about designing small cell technology, pressed by a shot clock that is out there from the FCC. So I, I'd like, I'd like to go over that and try to find out we can make standard, a standard design regulations that we can do when these applications come in, knowing that there's a sixty, is it sixty-two days of a shot clock to respond. Right now, I believe I can count at least three different styles of small cell technology. Anything from something that looks like more like a keg on the top of a telephone pole to something that has more panel, panelized, which is along, along the stretch. And I think everyone has a little bit of a different, I don't even know if we can call it vernacular, to a small cell. But if you go to many, uh, city centers downtown Chicago, State College, Pennsylvania, where the great Penn State University is, uh, those are all being installed, uh, that, on, on new, new poles with heights that are designed for multiple carriers also. So, um, I look forward to continue that, that, that type of conversation going forward, too. Because I think it will help our planning department make sure that we respond appropriately, but also, uh, effectively in a manner that we don't, we're not time-barred.
So David, you just, uh, raised a question for me. Um, when we're talking about these small cell facilities, uh, are they specific to one carrier or can they bounce the signal from all the carriers off the macros?
Right, they are, right now, the small wireless facilities, excuse me, that you have built are for single-service providers. And if you are going to have multi-producers, then they will need to either put in a new pole. They will need to expand the pole that's there or replace the existing pole with a new pole that can accommodate multiple tenants on it.
Thank you. And what would be the height of that, a, a multiple-tenant tower, then?
That depends on the design. We've seen small wireless facilities less than forty feet at trade shows that can accommodate multiple tenants on them.
There's a maximum, too, right, Susan? And I correct, I think there's a maximum fifty or fifty-two feet?
It is fifty, it is, is generally, rule of thumb is generally fifty feet. However, the definition does allow if you have taller utility poles in the right-of-way, then you can go taller, but you can't exceed the tallest ones in the right-of-way. So some communities may have sixty-foot poles in their right-of-way. And so they're not, they can go taller. But generally, the maximum height for small wireless facility is fifty feet.
Thank you.
Uh, so, um, I, I don't know the value of this question. So then in areas where the, like along the railroad where, where there's higher transmission lines, sixty-foot and above, would small cells be able to be placed on those? Besides the utility poles?
They could, provided the service provider allows them. And you do have some, you They could, provided the service provider allows them. And you do have some, you, some of those facilities along the railroad. There are, uh, there's at least two that we went to that are on utility poles in the railroad right-of-way that have wireless equipment on them. So there's a precedence for that already.
Thank you. So I, I wanted to thank you. You drilled down a 100-plus-page plan into this presentation that you put on for today and, and thank you for that. I was just, we, is the next step then to take this to public hearing? Or do we want to give the community more time to review the master plan? What's our next steps?
Well, I think if we schedule a public hearing on Thursday, there's still ample time for people to review the plan prior to the hearing. And then certainly we can take the public's comments at time of hearing. Uh, so I would think we would probably want to schedule it for a public hearing as soon as Thursday.
Okay. And when would we hear it? Would we?
Well, you have.
Allow, um, do it the second meeting in June? I know we've got a lot scheduled already for the first meeting in June.
Yeah, the 15th of June. Give myself a birthday present.
And this currently right now is.
Jeremy, uh, we have the planning director, Jeremy Samson. Jeremy, you want to weigh in?
Just a, a very quick comment. Um, I'd like to offer that the planning department would be available to answer public questions in advance of any public session before the town board, as you all just witnessed. Very technical, lot of layers to it. I think it would be easy to transpose or misunderstand the distinction between towers and poles, and those make a huge difference in terms of what potential impacts are. So I just want to extend the invitation to folks that if they email, call us, set up a time, we'll be happy to roll out the maps uh, and answer whatever questions we're able or get answers to any questions that we're not able. I would rather, uh, you know, provide that as an opportunity for people in advance in an attempt to contribute to a constructive conversation before the board.
And Jeremy, this, is this on, uh, this is on the town's website under wireless, wireless communications? Or is it under, sorry, emergency communications? Or is it under, uh, where will people find us on the website right now?
I actually have to defer to Carol or somebody else at this point on that.
There's a, a section on wireless master.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get it wrong.
I think if you go to the website and you type into the search bar, where it has the little magnifying glass, wireless master plan, it'll pop up immediately. In that next page.
Apologies, Carol. I, I thought maybe.
I appreciate that suggestion, Jeremy. So thank you. So folks, feel free to contact the planning department if you have specific questions about the plan leading up to the public hearing.
I don't think it's on the, under the current projects where we have one specific for personal communications. I don't think it's been placed there yet.
I, I know it was posted for this meeting.
On the work session material.
Yeah, but we'll make sure that it's posted in that wireless section of the, the town webpage.
I think also.
Both documents, right? The, the short version and then, and then the entire master plan.
And I think by noticing it on the 15th, it will give, um, enough time for the residents to have those communications with the planning department, you know, to answer some of these questions as we move forward, uh, instead of having it two weeks earlier. So I think a month would be a good time and make sure everyone understands that's very important aspect of, uh, the town's strategy for communications.
Any other questions or comments? I would just like to say, you know, this is part of our, uh, long-going effort now, uh, when COVID hit and we had, uh, due to lack of capacity and coverage gaps, both, and everybody remote working, remote streaming for entertainment, nobody could go out anywhere. You know, that really, uh, put a focus on the inadequacy, uh, which had grown over years, um, of our, of our, um, cellular, personal wireless communications. And, and I think the poll showing nearly 90% of the public supporting connectivity is a higher value to them than anything else that was asked, whether it was aesthetics or health concerns or whatever, was very instructive to us. And it was, I think, Susan, you had said that this was one of the highest percentages of responses you'd had in a public survey.
Correct.
And, and I think, uh, we know from personal experience that our community is quite involved with whatever the topic might be. And in looking at this whole situation comprehensively, it became apparent the last time the town had even updated its wireless code was in 2007, you know, nearly 16 years ago. Imagine if you had a 16-year-old cellphone, uh, would it even function? So, uh, you know, many of the FCC regulations have changed, put our planning board and our zoning board in awkward positions because our code was more restrictive than FCC regulations allowed it to be. So there were, you know, multiple denials or additional requests for, um, information and whatnot, that ran, uh, afoul of the FCC. And, uh, there are a couple of cases where, uh, you know, courts awarded, uh, the carriers the ability to place their communications where they had initially proposed them or in, uh, in additionally allowed the town to work with the carriers to find a location, uh, which we did, for instance, over by the Northwest Fire Supply District. So, you know, this is, uh, I think long-needed and I'm glad we're at this stage and look forward to hearing the public's comments of the public hearing.
Do we have an update on the Camp Blue Bay Tower?
Yes, so.
They're clear, they cleared, right?
I was there this morning.
Of course you were.
Cause you're everywhere. The, they, the foundations was installed last week. Uh, they're waiting for it to cure. It will go through inspection uh, next, in the next week or two. It was a very deep one. It's nine feet wide, 42 feet deep. And once they do that, they'll release the tower to be shipped and the tower will be installed pretty, pretty rapidly after that. They've, uh, looks like they've installed, um, uh, their meter panels and that's where they're at right now.
Right. Thank you, David.
And we also know that the fire department has an application to relocate, uh, to a conforming location under the code, a tower of 150 feet. Jeremy, is there any update on where that status on that or Eric?
Yeah, um, the, uh, Springs Fire Department did come in. They had submitted a preliminary site plan, which is essentially a one-time review for concept. They got very positive feedback from the planning board on that. So we are anticipating that they will withdraw their previous application, which was for a 180-foot tower and come in with this new proposal that is completely conforming to setbacks. The planning department has, or planning board has not received a formal application, um, as of right now. But we anticipate that that will be, um, submitted, received and reviewed, uh, in short order.
Thank you, Eric.
And I'd also like to mention with Camp Blue Bay, um, so the, the, obviously the tower has to go up first, but then after that, all the other carriers have to co-locate on that structure. The planning department, uh, has at least one, uh, application for a co-location that we anticipate can be reviewed and approved, you know, so it's ready to go as soon as the tower is ready. And, um, the planning department did reach out to the other three major carriers, uh, proactively to get them to submit those applications. And we understand that those are, are underway as well. So, um, we're hoping that basically as soon as the tower goes up at Blue Bay, that the carriers can go on there in short order and service, um, can be given to a, a large portion of Springs.
And then the emergency communications?
I'm sorry?
The emergency communications, are they, uh, scheduled as well?
Yeah, um, well, that, that aspect of it was already approved. Um, I, I would say that you should, uh, speak with Eddie Schnell directly about just timeframes with that. But, uh, I assume that once, um, the, the support structure, the tower is, is erected, that, that that will also occur in short order.
Thanks.
The only other update I would have would be the Stephen Hans Path Site, where the town board, uh, during, uh, we allowed for a cowl, selling wheels there. The current monopole, which I think is 110 feet, has been installed there. So at some point I would anticipate that coming online, the cowl being removed also.
Do we know what carriers are going on that, Eric?
That was originally a Verizon tower and I think AT&amp;T, they were in discussions to put AT&amp;T on that tower as well.
Yeah, Verizon was approved along with the, the, you know, the application as a whole. AT&amp;T is, is taking steps to co-locate on it. We haven't heard from the other two carriers.
Okay, thank you.
Ju- just one quick comment following up. Um, I, I want to underline the distinction between the tower being installed and the functionality, uh, placement of the equipment and the functionality. And I'm thinking specifically of Blue Bay. I, you know, it's almost like seeing a house go up. You say, wow, they're, you know, they're really, you know, throwing that thing together. And then there's this long period of sort of, what's going on with this thing, right? And, and that's when all the wiring happens and all that. And so I, I want to temper people's enthusiasm slightly that just because the tower looks like it's there and there's people up there and there's a big white dish hanging off the side of it, that doesn't necessarily mean we're at the finish line and there will be a, a lag there.
I don't think there's going to be a big white dish, but. It won't look so big at 180 feet. Thank you. Um, I guess we can move on now. The next topic.
Thank you, Susan and Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
So, um, next up is the 2023 Summer Airport Operations Update. We have, Jason, I believe we have Jim Brundage, our Airport Manager on the line, as well as, uh, folks from the Eastern Region Helicopter Association.
One second.
Discuss, um, approaches and departures uh, on the voluntary routes that lead to and from the airport.
Uh, who are these people again? I'm sorry.
It's, it should be.
Jim Brundage and then we should have some folks from Eastern Region Helicopter, Bl- Blair Peyton, Autumn, uh, Cannabis, Havana, sorry, Tyson Mallory.
Uh, I see them. I'm admitting them right now.
Great. Thank you so much. Good morning, Jim. And I believe we also have Tower Chief, uh, Jody Edwards with Jim. Welcome, everyone.
Hi. Let me know when you're ready.
We're ready when you are, Chuck.
Okay, so I'm going to put, um, my PowerPoint up on the screen if I can. See that?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so town asked me to report on airport operations for the upcoming season. And I'm going to be talking about, um, the description of the operations, the curfew, air traffic control tower operations, noise abatement initiatives and helicopter routes. Uh, so the airport is now considered a private airport by the FAA, but the, uh, with the, uh, airport, new airport ID is Akilo Juliet Papa X-ray for flight planning. Despite the private status, the court proceedings, court proceedings are preventing the town from implementing restrictions designed to control traffic flow. And I'll talk about that, um, in a few minutes when we get to helicopter routes. Operations are continuing as in the past with airport open to the public. Curfew is from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, no changes there and it's generally honored by airport users. If, uh, uh, we do have some violations, it's usually only like, uh, 15 minutes or very close to the, uh, published curfew hours. Very, very rarely do we get someone in the middle of the night. I put here that the tower is, was planned to begin operations on the 22nd, but Jody's here and he says he's going to get the airspace from the FAA on the 20th, coming, it's coming Saturday. So tower's going to open up on, uh, May 20th. Um, normally I would note in that, but, uh, since we don't have access to note them, so I'm going to put it on the, um, remarks section of the airport, uh, weather station and also try to send out blast emails to everybody. Uh, Steve helps me with that, with his clients. And also, uh, East Hampton Aviation Association will, will help me with that with the locally-based pilots. Tower always closes the Sunday after Labor Day and this year that is on September 10th. And their hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Noise abatement issues, the complaint line is, uh, open, uh, plane noise still manages that. Uh, there are four ways to file. You can complete and submit the form on the airport website under the heading File Aircraft Noise Complaint. Or you can use the complaint box mobile app, which is, explanation for that is on the website. You can leave a voicemail on this number, 800-7376-4817. Or you can send an email to jpx@plane noise.com. Set it up for a minute in case people want to copy it down. And helicopter routes, the routes are designed to safely control traffic in and out of the airport. It's one of the most difficult things we do here. They are developed in consultation with Air Traffic Control Tower Chief, Eastern Region Helicopter Council Officers and, and my staff. Noise abatement is a major concern, but safety is the primary focus. So I said I wanted to talk about the, um, how the routes were, uh, or the, um, restrictions were, uh, for a private airport were not allowed to be put in place. And we thought that, uh, we were going to have, uh, uh, restrictions. We thought that traffic, uh, last year in 2022 was going to be, uh, you know, uh, greatly reduced. So we limited the, uh, access to, uh, the airport with an echo route from the north and a Sierra route from the south. So that turned out not to be the case with the court restrictions and the traffic was, uh, about the same as it had been in past years, which put undue strain on the tower. And it also put undue strain on the community south of the airport. So to fix that, this year we reinstated the November route. And we're going to use it for arrivals only from the South Shore route. So helicopters coming out the South Shore will check in Shinakok Inlet. They can also check in there if they're leaving the, uh, Southampton helipad or Kereski, which is right here. They want to check in there, uh, for, uh, permission to come into the Class Delta via the November route. That's where they check in, Shinakok Inlet. And then fly the, the route as published. The Sierra route will be used only for departures this year and only if traffic permits, meaning that if there's no fixed wing traffic anywhere along the South Shore. Otherwise, aircraft can, uh, arrive and depart on the Echo route. The Echo route what is, what, uh, goes back to the Schumer Initiative where the intention was to have helicopters fly mostly over water coming out the North Shore route offshore, coming around Plum Gut, which is bulk, bulk, the, I think it's called bulk B, is equivalent to Echo Four, which is on the published route on the FAA published charts. And then come down to Echo Three and fly the route as published into Delta airspace. And the, be the opposite direction, but at a different altitude. And that's all spelled out in the, uh, in the, uh, helicopter route pamphlet. Arrival on the November route, departure on the Sierra route and arrivals and departures on the Echo route. This reiterates what I just said. The Echo route is available for arrivals and departures connecting to the North Shore helicopter route. And for arrivals from the South Shore helicopter route. And Sierra route is available only for pilots requesting departures to the South Shore helicopter route, traffic permitting, meaning no fixed wing traffic on downwind. Tower does not want to have any conflicts with, um, helicopters and fixed wing traffic south of the airport. So that's, that's what we're planning this season. I don't know if anybody has any questions or, or we have, uh, in addition to, uh, we have Autumn Cabanas. Did I, did I pronounce that right, Autumn?
Yeah, that's fine. It's Cabanas, but no, it's, thank you.
And, uh, Blair, is Blair with us? Chairman?
Yeah, Jim, I'm here, bud.
Okay, so I don't know. We're open for questions.
So, uh, Tyson, Tyson Mallory, my vice chair is here as well.
Right, sorry Tyson, sorry.
Good morning, Jim.
Yeah, the rest of, good, Jim. Go ahead, Tyson.
Yeah, good, good morning, guys.
I have a question about, um, inbound and outbound on Echo. My understanding was Echo Route was originally created to separate traffic, which used to be inbound and outbound on the northern route, uh, because of the concerns about safety, operating within the same flight path inbound and outbound. Um, so I'm curious as to why we would be routing inbound and outbound over a single route if that was a concern in the past. How, it's changed.
When I got here, there was one route in and out of the airport, and it was basically what's now known as the November route. Was called the, at that time was called the Power Line Route. And it started at Robins Island and picked up the power line and, and they would follow the power line into the airport, and it would follow the power line out of the airport. And the way that was managed was by having it done at different altitudes. And that's how we're managing Echo. We're having, in fact, let me see if I can pull up the, uh, actual helicopter route. Publish one. If I can share this on the screen. It's, it's thinking. Okay, let's see. So what I'm gonna do is stop share, and then I'll share screen again and pick up a new screen. There it is. Trying to get this to shit, uh, screen share helicopter arrival.
We can see it, Jim.
Oh, oh, you can?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me, uh, please.
Yeah.
You can see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, it's spelled out in the Echo route here. Let me bring it up. Echo, Bart, depart heading northwest to Echo One at best rate of climb, turn to Echo Two, cross Echo Two at 2,500 feet, proceed to Echo Three. Cross Echo Three at 2,500 feet, join the North Shore route. Arrivals, see eastbound and North Shore helicopter route, cross at 3,500 feet. So there's a thousand foot separation between departures and arrivals. That's how we manage that.
Well, wasn't that the case with, uh, November? And why would you change it?
But when we had November in and out, we, we managed it the same way with the, with the separation by altitude.
Right, and then Echo was added because of safety concerns, so.
No, Echo, Echo was actually there at, at the same, we, Echo has always been, this is part of the.
Started, Echo started in 2006, 2007, I believe, as, as a result of a close call with inbound and outbound on November.
That's, I'll have to research that, Peter.
Yeah, and Jim, if I may, um, Echo was instated, at least for the helicopter community and my awareness, very, very recently. And that was done as an all over water initiative. So, uh, with the safety, to Jim's point, you know, we're a thousand feet separated there for in and out. But it was to allow all over water and to eliminate, um, the entry level from the North Shore on the November end. So the November is actually changed from a North Shore arrival to a South Shore arrival. And reinstating that is gonna alleviate some of that inbound and outbound traffic on the Sierra route, which was the only inbound from the South Shore. So this is creating another way to come inbound from the South Shore to alleviate some of that noise there on the, the very southern end of the airport. But ideally, the Echo route was only there as an all over water initiative to keep that noise over the water. Tyson Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I believe that was the main reason we had that instated or reinstated for that matter.
But I think November proposed is probably as much, it's a shorter distance overall to get to water, all to, an all water route.
From the North Shore, yes, sir. Uh, but that's, we're not instating the November route from the North Shore. That will remain as the Echo route inbound to keep it all over water.
And if it's the South Shore route is also all over water, is it not?
It is, yes, but as, as Jim was saying, there's a, there's a very large noise sensitive area there with the, with the South Shore Sierra route in and out. So as a, the way to.
November, but I'm sorry, but the new November route goes out over water into the South Shore, and it's shorter than Echo.
Yes, it is.
But it's, it's a South Shore arrival instead of a North Shore arrival.
Correct.
Can we make a north, uh, arrival into November over, uh, the graveyard and, uh, into Robins Island?
Yeah, I mean, we, of course, we can make some changes based on, you know, your experience and, and recommendations. Um, and Peter, if, if you would prefer that November to be both inbound and outbound, we can do that. But I thought it would be less intrusive, uh, for people in NOIAC and that, this area to just have it as an inbound.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea that, um, moving the routes around is gonna alleviate noise impacts is probably a fallacy to start with. It, it seems to me like the November route is a much shorter route. And, you know, if you're going on Echo, you're going all the way to Plum Island. You're going actually north and east before you turn west versus the other way, which is almost immediately west.
Well, the, the Echo route is the Schumer Initiative, so I wanted to stay with that. If, if, we can look at having November be both inbound and outbound.
With a, with a possible, uh, North Shore, um, entry into the, uh, Robins Island as well. If we could do that, Jim, that would, that would alleviate the North Shore. If you come into North Shore, you're, the way it is now, you're, you're destined to do the Echo route. And, um, with a lot of helicopter pilots, that, that is, uh, less than ideal. Let's just say that.
So what you're suggesting is if you're gonna arrive on the November route, rather than come down the South Shore to Shinakok Inlet, you come across the island, the North Fork, or by Riverhead or something, and then connect with, uh, Robins Island and, and the North Shore route that way?
That wouldn't be bad. Is there, is it, what's the name of the, uh, the abandoned, uh, Air Force Base out there? And there's a, there's a graveyard?
Calverton.
Calverton.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, really, that's, uh, that's, that doesn't seem like a noise sensitive area. I know we've had a complaint that we're flying over the graveyard, but, I mean, honestly, there's no disrespect intended there. I mean, honestly, we do flyovers of graveyards all the time when we're honoring veterans. So it's really not disrespectful to the, to the deceased to fly over it. And one thing for sure, they're, they're not gonna complain about noise. So that is the most noise, uh, the least noise sensitive area that I can think of over, over Calverton and over the graveyard and into Robins Island.
Well, you've got a good point, and after you leave Calverton and head south toward Dubresky, you're, you're going over the Pine Barrens, and there's no houses there as well, so.
Yeah, so.
Maybe pick it up.
And that, uh, excuse me, that'll be good too, because we have a, um, you know, the Matatuck has always been a, a problem with us. So that'll keep us, a route like that using like a Calverton transition would keep us, you know, clear of that, um, that noise sensitive area there in Matatuck. Um, you know, more, or towards where the farms and, and sod farms and that, you know, are located.
And we could split the, uh, the departures on November, uh, South Route and the, uh, Southern Route, uh, the Sierra Route as well. Because, uh, I think if the people that are coming in from the South Route or from the Southern, Southern Shore, if they're constantly going out the Sierra Route, I think Wayne Scott's gonna, they're gonna get a lot of noise complaints there. But if we can split, uh, the Sierra Route and the November Route for the South Shore departures, that, I mean, you know, I don't know that, I, I, I think that it's almost, um, impossible to eliminate the noise complaints entirely. But I think if we split it up and, I mean, you know, split the misery, because I, I mean, I know we're noisy. We, the rotors are choppy, but there's no other way to do it. And if we split the, the November Route departures and the Sierra Route departures, I think, um, I mean, you cut it in half, basically, the Sierra Route departures if you use November. And it's almost all over water except there, um, over that one, uh, spot.
How would you suggest departures out of the November route? How would they follow? Go to November Two, November One, and then what?
Well, the same way in is the same way out. Shinakok Inlet.
Okay, so you're saying connect with the South Shore route?
Yeah, connect with the South Shore, but then the North Side go over the, uh, Calverton. If, are we talking the South Side, the South Shore now, uh, Jim? Are we talking North? I would do, I would do the same thing that you do on the Echo Route, just split it, uh, keep them a thousand foot apart and use the same routing that you have here on this picture here.
All right, I've got Jody here in the office with me. I think we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and, and, uh, what do you think, Jody?
Yeah, I, I, if we're gonna use November rain and out, then we're gonna need another altitude restriction, obviously.
Yeah, just make it the same, maybe. Uh, what, what was it again? Echo was 2,500 out and 3,500 in?
Right.
Yeah, just make it, could we make it the same way? I mean, you give us pilots too many, uh, things to remember, we're gonna forget them. So if we may name them, inbound is 3,500, outbound's 2,500 on any of the routes, that would, that would be ideal. I, I think, uh, Autumn and, uh, Tyson, do you, I mean, if there's a disparity there, please speak up, um.
No, I don't, yeah, I, I don't see any, um, any route, uh, altitude problems with that. Um, the only thing I would concern or would come into play, obviously, would be the, uh, the ceilings.
Oh, well, yeah, then.
Oh, yeah, well, there's a, um, let me just get it. There's a caveat in the bottom of the, uh, it says, please note, uh, if weather conditions prevent established altitudes, we may be in the sea and adjust as necessary. I mean, you guys fly BMC all the time and keep yourselves separated from each other. And you've got your teak ass and all that, so.
Jim, just for the viewing public, can you just let us know what BMC is?
Visual meteorological conditions, clear, clear clouds.
For the viewing public and myself, well, this is an, I think it's good to have this conversation. It would be great to hear, you know, working out the details and then coming back with the presentation that is, is worked out, rather than just kind of, I'm getting the feeling that, and it's good that you're thinking in the moment, but perhaps more, you know, analyzing things would, would be better.
Well, I'm willing to revisit this. Um, I'm sure, uh, Jody is too. But, uh, we thought we had a plan.
No, it's a good plan, Jim. It's just, you know, some minor adjustments. It looks like, uh, North Route and In-N-Out in November, and then everything else with the altitude restriction. I think that's really, I mean, it's, it's a minor tweak as far as I can see.
My main point is that we want to make sure that we alleviate noise from East Hampton as much as possible. And that's, you know, that's the goal that we all have. Now, if we have multiple arrivals and multiple departures, the shortest route, if, if pilots are given a choice, the shortest route will be there. So with this proposal, we have two arrivals, one from the South Shore, one from the North Shore. Whether that be the November end from Shinakok Inlet or the Echo end from the, uh, from the point there from Orient Point, and then outbound would be Sierra out and then Echo out. And now what we're looking at is adding another November route departure. So I think we all need to just keep in mind what that could imply, because it's gonna be the shortest route that's taken. So I think limiting options is also within our best interest.
Well, certainly the best interest for noise abatement.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll, we'll go back to the, we'll go back and, uh, review it and have something for you. Now, you've got your meeting tomorrow, so see if I can put something together today so you can, uh, take it to the.
Jim, are there any other, uh, operational updates other than just discussing the voluntary helicopter route that you haven't covered yet?
The RAM stuff, that's, you know, well, no, not really.
Staying the same, all, pretty much all the other operational aspects of the airport remain the same as previous years?
Yes.
So as you said, we'll have the tower from May 20th to the day, is it day after Labor Day?
No, the Sunday after Labor Day.
Sunday after Labor Day.
September 10.
All right, well, we look forward to, uh, having some more information back about the, those proposed voluntary routes. We thank you all for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is Boys and Girls Harbor Update Presentation. Dan Bell's coming in to run the project, but, um, basically the, just to give a brief background on timeline and, uh, 1954, the original camp was started by Anthony Duke. In 1937, uh, he moved it in, uh, to East Hampton in 54 from, uh, Kingston, New York. In the nineties, there were, there was a roads course added. Uh, 57 adjacent acres was purchased by the town of East Hampton, Suffolk County in 20, 2000, excuse me, 2003. Uh, the summer camp actually closed in 2006. And, um, there were, there were structures all over the property. All but just a couple structures were removed. The mess hall was retained with the idea that perhaps it could be repurposed, but it sat dormant pretty much from 2006 until its demolition in, uh, 2020. During, uh, the latter years, uh, the Town Property Management Committee looked at the structure to possibly repurpose it as a pavilion. Um, again, being situated on, uh, 57 acres of parkland. Um, and there being generally a shortage of pavilions where people could gather and picnic out of the weather and whatnot. We know how popular the Maidstone Beach Pavilion is. Uh, the Town Property Management Committee recommended that we have a, um, a pavilion placed on the site. It was determined ultimately that the mess hall structure was, um, not worth salvaging and that the cost associated with trying to renovate it, um, could exceed what it would cost maybe to build a new, uh, pavilion. Uh, we did bond for, um, new pavilion back in 2018. Uh, some of that, uh, money was spent for engineering purposes to date. Uh, we did hire, uh, Drew Bennett at one point to do a plan for, uh, renovating and repurposing the mess hall. Um, but the vast majority of the engineering expenses came, uh, after we accepted a, uh, bid for McLean in 2022. Town Property Management Committee did make presentations in the town board about suggestions. The idea of, um, locating the pavilion next to the existing parking, parking lot, much closer to the road, uh, and at the, um, end of the, uh, pavilion, I mean, excuse me, the field. And if you could go to the next side for the site plan, um, seemed to be the best location as there was already existing parking there. And there you go. So this is a site plan. If you look in the center of the picture, you'll see that cleared field area. And the white rectangle is, uh, the proposed location next to that existing parking lot. There is a dirt road that leads back into the back of the property. The recommendation is that it be, uh, closed off to authorized vehicles only. Um, and this is the beginning. That pink is the actual outline of the ADA path that you all approved and is currently under construction. Would originate from the parking lot, circle around and end up back at the pavilion. Uh, just south where you see the little orange square, that's where the, uh, proposed comfort station would be. It was also decided that due to the proximity of, of public water and utilities from the road, that that would, um, keep expenses lower as well. The, I believe, um, your committee, uh, Kathy, the, uh, advisory.
Disabilities Advisory Board?
Disability advisories, uh, were supportive of, uh, that plan. The, um, Town Property Management Committee, you may remember there were some cones placed out on the field here next to Town Hall, uh, so people could get an idea as to what the appropriate size for a pavilion might be. Um, it's roughly, um, I believe 30 by 38 or 24 by 38, rather. And, I don't know, can you zoom in on that at all? This would be the, roughly the style of pavilion.
Bless you.
So, uh, it was decided that due to, um, the grade change from the parking lot, that, uh, we needed to set the pavilion a little bit further to the north and, uh, west, uh, to give enough space to have, uh, acceptable grade. to give enough space to have acceptable grade for handicap access from the parking lot. And then you can see that gray rectangle would be the comfort station located nearby. And if you could go to the next slide. It was determined that a steel frame structure, with a metal roof, would be desirable here for a couple of reasons. Mostly for maintenance over time, the expected, like, the life expectancy of the structure would be well longer than a wooden structure, and we require basically no maintenance. We, in terms of next steps, if you continue, go back one, sorry. So this is roughly the, the configuration of the comfort station. There would be a larger overhang on the front side so that people could stand and wait out of weather. And we do have that contention plan for water bottle filling stations and drinking fountain. This would be a low nitrogen system. So in terms of the next steps, we need to have the engineering for the building, placement of the actual structures. They are available on public bid, so Sourcewell can be the, the source for these structures. The comfort station's pretty much prefab. It gets delivered and assembled on site, similar to what's going on in Wesley, that David's been working on there for the Wesley Comfort Station update. Of course, we have a low nitrogen system. And are there any questions?
I think the design of the pavilion is gonna be very similar to what we've already done at our other pavilions, being Maidstone Park and also over at Stephen Hans Path Ballfields then too. So it's trying to keep continuity to the designs of our, of the recreational locations.
I feel it's great, and I think it's so good to see these spaces get enhanced usage for everyone. So to be able to, you know, be able to picnic outside is a great opportunity for folks to be outside. And the multi-use path is, is wonderful for folks with all, you know, including folks with all mobility levels is really opens up all of our, our parks to, where we have them, to all, all of everyone, and that's really great to see and really important for me.
I know the Buckskill multi-use path is getting a lot of use, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about that. The fact that people can walk with strollers or children learning to ride bikes have a safe place to, to test their skills. You know, away from the harms of traffic and whatnot, and in a beautiful outdoor setting. One of the things we found was that the utilization of this particular park and some others would be enhanced by having, you know, comfort stations and, you know, a shade shelter where people could picnic without being worried about ticks or anything else.
With, with the bathroom also, the one that we are installing at Wesley. Once it's been installed, which pretty much just gets put onsite, it's modular. The town staff's been there to look at the plumbing and the catch systems on there. It's gonna be very easy for long-term maintenance to, if something happens, the way they go into the catch rooms, be able to maintain, maintain them. A little bit maybe even over-engineered, but that's good for, for the long-term use if we're looking for thirty to fifty years out of these, these facilities.
I like the standardization of the prefab, you know.
So there are some options in terms of siding. I think this is sort of the standard clapboard. Cement board clapboard, which is highly durable. They also make a cement board faux shingle as well as board and batten, vertical board and batten, so they're different appearances. And then, of course, we would select color tones that are reflective of the natural color tones onsite, as we do with Maidstone. The, the color of the roof there blends nicely with the dune land.
And the pavilion, yeah.
The beach and, you know, again, so the color selection would be more muted tones, natural tones, rather than blue and white.
Security cameras over there too.
So.
We've had some vandalism there in the past.
So what's interesting is, yes, we can look into that. I would probably say we, we need to get connectivity in there so we could actually conduit it, depending when we, when we put that in and then run the line and just pigtail and leave it. One of the nice things about these bathroom doors that we're, what we found out is that they can be locked automatically on a time schedule. So what's happening is that since we've seen a lot of vandalism, we'll go into that into our next, our beach action plan, is that these doors can be closed without a staff member having to go there, let's say, at its time, midnight, opened up at five AM. And if you're inside of there when it's locked, you can actually press an escape button, sorry, an exit button that's inside of there. So you won't get trapped in there, but what it does, it, it allows less manpower to be able to open and close the bathrooms, stay away from times of vandalism that we've seen also. And then, yes, the next, next portion that we can look at also for security.
I mean, one of the other things we found is that it's often sites that are underutilized, that are vandalized, that when you have the public there and utilizing properties, that there's less vandalism. So we think these improvements will, you know, attract people who are looking forward to enjoying the property and.
Caring for it too.
Exactly, taking, I mean, this is a, a benefit to the immediate community as well as the, the entire community. So look forward to that next step. And again, you know, we expect to be completed, I think, before the end of the year on all aspects is the goal. The pavilion itself will probably be constructed and installed before the comfort station set will take a little bit more time. Any other questions or comments, folks? Okay, we can move on to the two thousand and twenty-three summer beach report, and that's you, David, and I see we have John Ryan Jr. and.
Yeah, Chief, if you want to come up to the podium as well, so. So we got thirteen days to move on.
How many days, dude?
I think it's thirteen, if anyone's counting here.
That's less than two weeks.
Start running soon, maybe, Mike?
They're here.
They're here? All right, don't tell. Them spots are getting taken.
Excuse me, I gotta go.
Exactly. Anyway, I wanna thank everyone, and primarily, this is a presentation that the, the beach advisory group, internal group met. We want to just alert the town that what the town is doing to prepare ourselves for the summer season upcoming, opening hours of our beaches and such. And if we just roll through this quickly, our beach advisory committee includes myself, chiefs, you know, members of buildings and grounds, town police, parks and recreation, marine patrol, lifeguards, and, and the town trustees, among others, and two. Next, if you can, I do have one little typo on this one. Response, the beach advisory committee was put together in a response to, to the pandemic, that was actually March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty on there. Post-pandemic, the town council continues to support the advisory's capacity, advisory capacity of the beach advisory committee as we get ready for our summer season, and then also allowing, giving input and recommendations to the town board post-summer seasons too. Our two thousand and twenty-three beach action plans includes recommendations for lifeguarded beach operations, East Hampton Town lifeguard safety protocols. It's a development of our comfort station operating and custodial procedures. We apply for our two thousand and twenty-three Suffolk County beach operating permits, they've been approved. Continued efforts to maintain needed staffing levels for all departments, coordinated enforcement efforts of this, and continued coordination between agencies and town departments to carry out this operation plan. Our next one, I'm gonna let this be, we have Chief John Ryan Jr. from East Hampton Town lifeguards. A font of knowledge to waterproofing the town, family has been out here working on this for nearly four decades on there. The town and the residents are, and visitors are only lucky to have in the visual of his demeanor, capacity and expertise here. So, John, if you want, you want to run through our lifeguards, two thousand and twenty-three?
Absolutely, you know, looking forward to a great season. I want to thank the town board for making it to our summer kickoff, kickoff party that we hosted at the, at the clubhouse. Certainly the highlight of that was getting a chance to meet David Plotkin, who unfortunately, well, fortunately, was revived from a cardiac arrest at Indian Wells last summer. He got a chance to speak and, and share his story, and so it was great for you to be able to be there and, and meet him. Also, if you didn't, for those of you that don't know, yesterday was International Water Safety Day, and we have, I just came from the country school. I didn't think I was gonna make it here, but I did. I came from the country school to talk to little bit, five-year-olds and six-year-olds who are are the most dangered by drowning. And over three hundred and six, sorry, three hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty, sorry, two hundred and thirty-six thousand people drowned worldwide. And in the US alone, thirty-five, three thousand five hundred to four thousand per year. Drowning is the leading cause of unintentional injury-related deaths to children between the ages of one and four. And unintentional, these things can be prevented. So we're, the Ambigant's a lifesaving, I wouldn't be, I, I get, as I get older, I sound a little like my, more like my dad. Gotta give a commercial. The Ambigant's a lifesaving station this weekend is hosting the International Water Safety Day at the station between eleven and two. We have a tremendous number of organizations going to be there to work, to talk to people about how to be water safe. Food and Ocean Rescue is gonna do a demonstration. So encourage everybody to, families, it's a free event. We, we have refreshments, and we have wealth of knowledge of water safety. But we're looking forward to this summer. We've been preparing individuals to become lifeguards. We're concluding our, our Stillwater certification on June tenth. And probably thereafter, a little after, but we're picking up on Memorial Day Tuesday with our ocean certification training. I gotta thank the town board, it's, it is, it is difficult to live out here, and I appreciate that they've, the salaries have been increased to be leading salary out here in East Hampton. And it's a lot of work and the guards know it, and they're ready to step up and continue the success that they've had each year. You know, based on the increased separation of groups, we are, we are, you know, people going down protected beaches. We have been fortunate enough to be able to alert people when the changing conditions happen of dangers of the surf through trucks, ATVs, and certainly rescues make it a whole lot quicker for us to get to swimmers in distress on unprotected beaches. New ATVs are in, they're being prepared, detailed, so that they can be utilized on our beaches. I, I spoke about the testing programs. We're also running a PWC rescue operators course to, because.
PWC is personal watercraft.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, personal watercraft, some people call them jet skis, some people call them wave runners. To use these, we have to make sure they're used safely, and therefore we, we train individuals on how to make rescues using these jets, these PWCs. And our numbers have increased, other agencies are using them as well, and are coming to us for guidance and certification on use of PWCs. We have thirty-five, seven different agencies coming to the town of East Hampton for that certification. And thirty-five individuals, which we had to break into two separate groups because you can't train thirty-five people effectively and safely. So we're gonna break them into two groups of fifteen and, sorry, eighteen and seventeen. That's happening on the second and, and the tenth, second, sorry, the second, third, fourth, and the tenth and the eleventh. We're also, our junior lifeguard program is going strong. We've been training individuals at the Y Pool. Thank, thank you to the Y for their support. And we're qualifying juniors and nippers, nippers ages six to eight, and juniors ages nine through fifteen. Fifteen's become our cadets and they're our future lifeguards when they turn sixteen. And so I, I, I strongly encourage, another, another commercial, those parents are out there that, you know, we strongly encourage you, get your child enrolled in our programs because then they will gain confidence and the skills needed to save them someday or save somebody else's life back in, back to International Water Safety Day, which is to educate the public on water safe ways.
This is, the next slide here is recommendations for the guarded beach operations. Johnny, just want to go over the opening days for our guarded beaches.
Yeah, so Indian Wells, Ocean Beaches will be Indian Wells, Atlantic Avenue, Kirk Park, and looks like it's gonna be South Edison. The conditions, we're hoping, there's a lot of sand out there in the surf, and we're hoping that Mother Nature is kind to us and delivers that sand up onto the beach and you know, and look, during the summer, the beaches always grow. And during the winter, Mother Nature takes it away. So, so hoping, hopefully that sand will be moved back up. But if not, we have made arrangements to open South Edison. Also, it's going to be, Albert's Landing will be open for preseason, Memorial Day weekend through June, June tenth. And then on June seventeenth, all the rest of the beaches will be open. I would like to say that, you know, we are still looking to hire. We have a few more spots open. And so if anybody's out there looking for a job, I just got a couple of calls yesterday for individuals that are looking to get certified and, and become East Hampton Town lifeguards.
Thank you, Johnny. So just to repeat that the town, we're prepared to open our, the majority of our ocean beaches for lifeguards starting Saturday, May twenty-seventh, nine to five PM, that'd be on the weekend basis. And our ocean, our ocean, our bay beaches, traditional bay beaches will be open seven days as of June seventeenth. And we go to the next one. Our Buildings and Grounds Department has met. There's a large amount of effort displayed to getting our town facilities ready for this calendar year. Primarily, we're adding new beach rule directional information that we did at our other ocean beaches. John, Ron, John Rooney and John Ryan worked really hard on that. We're gonna be adding this information, has QR codes, beach flyers, beach fires, beach regulations to our, some of our bay beaches now. We're also adding them to our two Wayne Scott Road ends, our side of Town Line Road and also Beach, Beach Lane in Wayne, in Wayne Scott, and we're also gonna be adding in a Wayne Scott one and a Wayne Scott two emergency, emergency point of extraction, what were you calling it, Johnny?
Say again?
The W one and W two.
You mean the certifications?
You know, the, the emergency access points, locations, we're adding, we have ambigants at Montauk, and we're adding Wayne Scott one and two, the orange, the orange signs.
Yes, we're, we're ordering rip current signs as well for those. And double-sided rip current signs with a QR code as a Spanish conversion to all that.
Great, so we're putting those signs up. So for first time, we're also gonna be adding the emergency access points to, to Wayne Scott, just to our locations, not to any of the, the private entity, homeowners group didn't want to add it to it. We are adequately staffed in Buildings and Grounds for our refuse removal. That started seven days as of yesterday. Our trash runs are adequately staffed and will be implemented in the mornings, including our beach raking also. Custodial staff levels are also adequate for the season with increased frequency of bathroom cleanings that we continued on since COVID also. Wifi is currently being installed at select areas and beaches, and security cameras will follow after that. We are gonna continue from the start of the season this year due to vandalism that we've, vandalism that we've had in our, in the past that we're gonna be closing at nighttime. That timeframe is gonna be, depending on staff availability, probably be eleven, eleven to midnight, but they'd be closed probably from midnight to about five or six in the morning, then two, and that'll be our bathroom beaches. Next on there, our town Police Department and Marine Patrol, it's not a recap, but it's actually moving forward. We have a great amount of consistent communications between all the entities that take care of our beaches, from the lifeguards up to Marine Patrol to Chief, Chief of PD, Chief Sarlo. We have actually hired more marine patrols this year. We have actually hired more Marine Patrols this year, one more staff member there. And we are looking to have even a greater presence on enforcement on the sand, the beaches after, in the nighttime this current year. Staff levels are adequate for the season. What we have done is at, at Beach Lane, Wayne Scott, and also Ditch Plains of Montauk, we're getting the Ambigant's, but redoing all the parking signs in the parking lots to make sure that some of them are just, actually, first of all, there's just fake signs out there. Second of all, some of them get vandalized, some of them are just out of date. And third, last one is that they need to be of a certain writing so that we could, they can be adjudicated. So we're making sure we're going through all those signs. I thank the Buildings and Grounds Department, that's initiative that no Chief Sarlo is very happy with. We also suggested to have a summer beach manager position to coordinate all the departments that, as ladies on to the town board. And a continued request within this group for, for looking for our new unified command location in Montauk for Police Department, Marine Patrol, lifeguards and others. East Hampton Town Trustees and talking with Francis Bach, they're going to continue to work with East Hampton Town Agencies on enforcement, specifically with poaching. nighttime activities and fires will be monitored. They still have their kayak racks for users, please contact their office. The pump out boat has increased volume of use due to greater efficiency of the new boats and they're, they're ready to be moved forward. What I don't have on there is that the clerk of the trustees also said they're working with clever monitors, working with our Natural Resources Department then too. Lastly, on here, as we move forward, let's always swim near a lifeguard, be respectful of others, and clean up your litter on the beach, the ABCs. You can probably go D, E, and F if you want to keep going. But let's just move forward to a great summer season. I want to thank the town board for all the support that you've given these, of these organizations that we need. I think one of the things since COVID, the negatives of COVID is that our responses to our beaches have only been stronger because there's a unified, unified structure of responses and coordination. And I thank Chief John Ryan for having such a great lifeguard crew. The town is always looking for staff members. Please contact our, our Human Resources Department if you have any interest. That's all I have.
Thank you, David, and thank you, John Ryan Jr. We appreciate all you do, keeping our town safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you. Can I just also add, since we're talking about beaches for 2023 and remind folks that you don't need a special event permit if you're, you know, up to twenty people older than eighteen are on the beach and there's no tent and the event is not catered or no other services have been contracted. And we recently changed the, the code, chapter one fifty one regarding wedding ceremonies and catered events. So wedding ceremonies are permitted, but just for fifty guests or less. And catered events again are permitted, but again, it's that number is fifty or less and all require a special event permit. And I'm guessing that as part of the signage that's going up is to remind folks about what the rules are as far as beach fires are concerned. And just also just want to put a plug in that, you know, you need to use a metal container. You need to burn only whole and natural wood. You need to have water ten feet from the beach fire. And also that beach fires on town property, there's no commercial provision for that. There are no services providing beach fires on our, on our beaches. That would be considered illegal peddling. Although if you are having an event, some of the events that come in with a caterer are also providing beach services, you know, beach fires, that is permitted with a special event permit.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just throw in a plug for, please don't trash East Hampton. And please, anything you bring to the beach, please take it out with you. And don't leave it for others to clean up or for wildlife to find it. It's all of our responsibilities to, to take out what we take in, so, so please do.
Thank you. And with that, I think we'll have a great summer season. We know we'll have to adapt to changes as we go, but your, your town staff is prepared and ready for yourself, enjoyment, and of your visitors that are coming.
Thank you. Back to the agenda, we have proposed changes to chapter two forty.
That is correct. I have three changes that we discussed in my liaison report for changes to chapter two forty. And if you just bring up the first one, that one's fun. One of them is actually adding no parking on to the southern terminus of Queens Lane from the two tax map parcels to the south. This has been requested by individuals in this area. As we reminded a couple of years ago, we added no parking to the north side of Queens Lane. Interesting that Queens Lane actually gets narrower as you come south here. It's also, it's got a big curve there and two, it's just a little bit of a blind curve. It's been mostly repaved. And what's happening is the, the parking on the side of the, the right of way is going to start eating away at that new paving on there. So this is one of the options, it's supported by PD and also by, by highway then too. So you're okay, well, I'd like to move this one forward. Next one in. This one here is interesting on here. No problem, this is a Montauk, this is the three areas of Montauk that we discussed last year that we're, we're moving forward and adding paid parking to these locations once we have our LPRs and our actual.
License plate reader.
License plate readers, thank you very much. And also our paid parking apps, ready to move, move there. We want to add that into the town code for paid parking. The only provision we have in the town code allows for paid parking right now at the airport. So we want to encapsulate these locations, Kirk Park, Atlantic Avenue, and also the airport into one section of the code allows for, allows for paid parking by app at these locations. And also a couple of locations like this, you'd be allowed to still use a permit parking also then too. So it's a change that we are just trying to move forward into this new.
So is Atlantic Avenue going to be using an app or are we going to have a person at the?
Right now, we're going to, no, Atlantic Avenue is only planned on using a person and so is Kirk Park's plan to be, plan to be. But if we wanted to in the future, the code is ready for it then too. It's both in the code then too, both allowances are in there.
That's great.
Lastly, here, thank you. This is actually, this is a road improvement district that we just completed in Montauk, a large infrastructure project in front of Rough Riders. What it did, it actually took a, old your road that was traditionally very flooded out, iced over and a dangerous area for public safety, added, as you can see, the four locations for drainage on there. But what it did start, include is now a stop sign intersection at Fort Pond Road and Manor Road. We would like to codify this and put this into the code. And that'd be the section of the code that we would like to go out to a public hearing to add, to add that, this into, into the code for stop intersection.
Good idea.
And that's all I have for changes.
All good.
If you support that, I'm going to probably put these on for public hearing to be heard on June first then.
Okay, so.
That's great.
Public call have an opportunity away and then. And that concludes our work session agenda items. We now have liaison reports. Kathy, you have a report for us today?
I do, I do. I would start off with Human Services with the new senior center. The team held two big meetings last, well, in the last several days with R2 and our consultants. Last Thursday, we were, met with the team as well as Dave Brown, our chief fire marshal was there, as well as Natural Resources staff members, Mark Abramson and Sam Klein. We discussed the site plan and addressing the comments that were raised at the presentations when R2 was here. I'm trying to think, last month, I guess. The, we talked about the potential clearing, clearing window and how that relates to the Northern Longyard Bat. We discussed PV canopies, if we had a design preference, what platform we would be using to monitor net zero. We reiterated that it's an all, we're looking for an all electric building except for propane generator. And it was shared that the kitchen accounts for forty five percent of the energy consumption. We also brought up that we would like to include and incorporate battery storage. Talked about how we commissioned the building and trained staff to operate it, what the set points are for thermal comfort, for heating and cooling. And then we talked a little bit about the planning and ARB process as it, you know, relates to the site plan, traffic, lighting, buffers, the IA system and whatnot. Where the planning board, a planning department has already started, the EAF. We're targeting June fourteenth to go to, before the planning board for a review of the project. And then yesterday, we were joined by, for an IT meeting and we were joined by Heath Liebman, Nancy Seraphin, and Andy, and Eddie Schnell from PD. We needed to discuss the town's needs and expectations for IT, what we want wired and where we want it wired, audio, visual and video conferencing needs for each space, as well as our security needs, where we wanted the location of the cameras, card readers and whatnot. So it's really been a joy to work with R2 and their team. I mean, they really, you know, all of these discussions are happening, you know, way upfront. I mean, we just started design development, but, you know, I think this is gonna, you know, obviously save money in the long run. We won't have change orders, we're going to know exactly what we're, we're getting as we move in. Diane Patrizio had asked me to announce that two of our Wellness Sixty Plus programs are going to be canceled for tomorrow. One is the morning yoga at the senior center and the other is the afternoon yoga at Ashwell Hall. And this is for Wednesday, May seventeenth. Those programs won't be taking place. The YMCA is having an active older adults day and it's scheduled for Wednesday, May thirty first at the Y. And our Human Services Department will have a table there and will be distributing information about our programs. I also just wanted to say that the East Hampton Flower Shop on North Main Street donated flowers for each of the moms for Mother's Day at the senior center. And in addition, they generously donate nine centerpiece pieces each week. So they have fresh flowers on the table when they dine at the senior center. Yeah. So if you remember, Peter, I guess it was last fall, we presented Route to Twenty Seven, Adriana Leone and Louise Bergerson with proclamations for the incredible work that they do that started in 2014. It helps Spanish speakers improve their communication skills and helps them integrate more fully into our community. So I was outreach by Andrew Visconti and we were talking about the program. And I had mentioned that if he wanted to bring his class or any other class to Town Hall, I would be happy to meet them and have a meeting. And he shared, well, we only meet, you know, on Thursday nights from seven to nine P.M. And I said, that's fine, pick a Thursday. And they came last Thursday and the program has seven levels of instruction. Andrew's class was level five and a number of folks came and we had a really robust conversation. I answered their questions, they answered my questions. We talked about, you know, things that were important to them like bicycle, bicycle safety. Kate, I now, you know, May is bicycle safety month. So we talked about that, we talked about affordable housing, recreation, and how best to communicate the town's services and programs to the Latino community. Because, you know, when I was sharing some of the programs that we offer and many of our programs or most of our programs and services, it doesn't look at immigration status or whether you're a citizen or whatnot. They were really surprised by, you know, all that we had to offer. So it was just a really warm, thoughtful and engaging experience. And I can't wait to have, you know, other folks in from the program, happy to do that. The Springs Park Committee, I've been mentioning this the last few work sessions. The annual cleanup is this Sunday, May twenty first, from ten to eleven thirty. No RSVP needed, spread the word, they say the more the merrier. And this is brought to us by the Springs Park Committee. We had gotten a request from the East Hampton Group for Wildlife. If you remember, they did a pilot program last year where they put up signs that read, slow down, protect wildlife. They'd like to do that again, ten signs that are eighteen by twenty four in each hamlet. And they'd like to have them posted from May twenty sixth to October tenth. And I was going to offer a resolution on Thursday if everybody is supportive of those signs. We're talking, you know, a hundred signs to go up. They thought that it was quite effective last time. Right, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty, right, ten, five hamlets, fifty. I wasn't so good at math just then. The other thing that's come back and is that the town is offering their summer recreation program again at Springs. And we haven't had that program operating since COVID. And the social worker at this, at the spring school reached out to us and she said that there are a number of students that would really benefit from the program, but they don't have the financial means in order to participate. And in the past, we've offered scholarships to these programs. So I'd also like to offer a resolution on Thursday where we waive the town's fees for up to seven full day scholarships to the Springs, to the town's recreation program at Spring School. This is something that John Rooney in Recreation said that they can certainly accommodate.
Yeah, it's something we've done for many years now.
Another, just a plug reminder that property taxes, your second half property tax payments are due without penalty by May thirty first. And there are many options to, to pay those taxes, including online or at the dime bank. And then I have a resolution on later, for later today. And this is to approve the Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grant Program application. This is something that it's for a project at the Montauk Playhouse. The Montauk Chamber would be the sponsor. And they've identified a project, it's the installation of new runoff and stormwater drain system, including six additional drainage structures. The request is for a sixty thousand dollar grant. And it, resolution states that the town is committed to, you know, providing the match for that project. And that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Kathy.
I do, as Chief John Ryan Jr. mentioned, this Saturday at the Ambigant's Life Saving Station is International Water Safety Day. I think it's the second year that the society has done that. It's from eleven A.M. to two P.M. Now there'd be interactive activities discussing water safety. You see the volunteer ocean rescue, you see the hurricanes, you see the junior lifeguard and nipper guard programs will be there. U.S. Coast Guard, Marine Patrol, Eastern Long Island Surf Rider Foundation, the YMCA, Brex Center, Life Saving Station, Paddle Diva, Rotary Club, and the East Hampton Historical Society will all be participating. It's a great day, we're surrounded by water. We have to make sure how we keep ourselves safe by water also. I want to let everyone know that the Stephen Hands Path Drainage Project is on, on, on track to be complete prior to Memorial Day. Have you gone by there this morning or recently? They're paving and installing the wooden barriers that are there. And they're going to be spraying with a native seed bank in there. So that project is moving ahead on, on schedule, which is great. It's been great to work with that contractor. Talking about another large project, the downtown Montauk Beach Stabilization Beach Replenishment has started. It started actually last Friday and has been working today and yesterday. Yesterday, they placed just a little over fourteen cubic, fourteen hundred cubic yards of sand out there. It's going to take at least another week and a half potentially to, to get it all out there. With that, we want to make sure that everyone understands, knows that we're, the town is out there currently even today working on some of the crossovers. Crossovers were very heavily damaged in December then too. So we're working in conjunction with the sand placement down there also. At the Springs, Springs Youth Association Building, the town, we are, we, we already had done the basketball, but we are actually now doing the resurfacing of the tennis courts. That's currently happening over the last two weeks right now. So the tennis courts and the basketball courts will be resurfaced and painting, painting that's ongoing today. The school and the tennis coach has been informed on that, they understand that then too. So that's, that should be maybe end of a conclusion by the end of this week then too. As I mentioned already before, we replaced the signs with ditch and we're looking at other locations there. There's tremendous amount of fake signs in the township, surprisingly. And we are, we are addressing that. The Nature Preserve Committee met last week, primarily discussion was changes to chapter one sixty two, which is the nature preserve status and also into chapter one sixty two, where we're looking at how we regulate town properties also. It's a long time coming, going, it's going to take a couple more meetings at least for that then too. I want to let everyone know that we had a meeting last Wednesday of our engineer, capital project managers and Marine Patrol with slip holders that are, that use the Star Island Commercial Dock. And it's a project that has taken a long time to complete, going into another second season. We let them, let the slip hold, answer the slip holders' questions, also let them know what a delays are and had a very clear amount of conversation with them too.
Those delays are related to the contractor and supply of materials, as I understand. Those delays are related to the contractor and supply of materials, as I understand.
Yeah, it's a, it's a contractor procurement issue right now with materials that we hope to continue to work on right now. But we wanted to make sure the slip holders knew that where we are and just have a large meeting with them then too. And it was a very productive meeting. Couple of last things on here. This Saturday, at the Carl Fisher House for the Montauk Historical Society at 7:00 PM, is having a guest lecturer, Hugh King, and he's discussing Carl Fisher and his effects on Montauk. It's the first event that they're having there. That's at 7:00 PM upcoming. Two last things, more personal to me. I went to a memorial service for one of my best friends from high school for his dad. His name was Van Quick. Van Quick was actually a 35-year cop from out here in East Hampton. Came up from Alabama. Van was a very large gentleman, very intimidating when he came over to Steve's house. But Van was actually the first ever, he's a captain of the police department and then also the first officer, precinct commander in Montauk. And there was a lot of great stories being told about Mr. Quick on there. He'd be missed, but it was nice to see his wife, Mrs. Quick, in the family then too. Lastly, May is also Asian Pacific Heritage Month. Myself being Indonesian, my father from Indonesia, I could talk about him all day long and what he means to me and his effects to not just myself, but to the community. But instead, I want to bring up Toon Han. Toon Han is originally from Rangoon, Burma, also known as Miramar. Mr. Han earned a doctorate in fish farming from the University of East Anglia in England and arrived in the South Fork in 1978 to work at the Ocean Sciences Laboratory in Montauk, which is where the town's agriculture facility is. At the time, there were major problems with striped bass and his task was to find out what he could do to revive the population. This comes from a Star article I'm reading here. Eighteen months later, the economic downturn, lab loss of state funding. 1979, Toon saw the handwriting on the wall, he said, and that he had two options for year-round jobs at that time, selling insurance or selling houses. So he jumped in the real estate market with both feet and he's been doing it ever since. Toon is not just a polite, cordial man. He's a man that also has now spent nearly 40 years as a volunteer ENT in the Amagansett Fire Department, raised a family out here. He has also been a long-term member of the town's Assessment Review Board. Have you ever had a chance to see Toon? He's just, he's just that kind of a human being then too. And I wanted to make sure everyone knows about some of the Asian individuals that we have in the town that, that participate in town and volunteer. That's what I have.
Thank you, David.
I do. I, I just want to let everyone know that the next Litter Action Committee event for the No Fling Spring is at the East Hampton High School Video Competition that we approved for a PSA for the litter committee that in collaboration with the Hamptons International Film Festival and Neo-Political Cowgirls will take place at LTV Studios on Industrial Road in Wayne Scott on May 24th at 7:00 PM. So this is a mentored collaboration with high school students to create videos, short videos. And one of their videos will be at the anti-litter public service announcement videos along with student video productions created under the guidance of mentors from HIFF and MPC. And they will be screened at LTV Studios that evening. Prizes will be awarded for the top three anti-litter video productions. So I look forward to going to that. As, as Kathy mentioned, it's Bike Safety Month. And as David reminded us, it's 15 days also to Memorial Day weekend. And as we know, traffic greatly increases of both, all kinds of traffic, pedestrian, bike traffic and car traffic. So I ask everyone again to please review safety lists and road rules. You can find a link to all of the above at the town's website. Also, please remember helmets. Even if you're over the age of needing helmets, they will save your life. And to think of reflective, some type of reflection on the front, the back and both sides of your bike so cars can see you if you're riding in the dark. And enjoy the roads and enjoy the trails, but please be safe. Also, the zoning code amendment group, which I'm calling the ZCA, they're meeting on Monday morning. And we looked at forms of data collection that will be interested in gathering in order to look at, review the codes. And we also saw presentations on comparable towns or towns close by that have recently completed some code changes, zoning code changes or, or in the process of. And that would be Southhold, Shelter Island and Chilliwack. And we'll be reviewing more towns as we look to collect additional data. The Energy Sustainability had a very productive meeting yesterday. The members there passed unanimous resolutions on three topics and are considering another one for recommendations to the town board. One is to request a booklet on sustainable landscaping and native planting, similar to something that they're presented. And I'll send around a link to this booklet that they did up in Bellport that really had a lot of advice for folks. As we know, education about the best sustainable landscape practices and our town codes regarding the suspension of gas leaf blowers, which is about to come into effect on the 20th. Part of that is educating the public as to, as to what those rules are and best practices for sustainable landscaping that protects our pollinators instead of destroys them. Also, they passed a resolution recommending that the town revisit community choice aggregation. They were thrilled to see that we have already enabled legislation. In fact, an entire code chapter. The roadblock that was holding us up at the time has been cleared up on the state level. So towns now are able to offer a community choice aggregation. Even in that, that code section went so far and is so complete as to recommend who would sit on a CCA advisory group, including the supervisor and members of the budget and procurement department heads here as well. So that will be a recommendation that will formally come from them. They also passed a unanimous recommendation to proceed with all electrification on new construction here in the town. They noted, and as we all know, New York has just passed legislation to enact building codes for all electrification to help us get off fossil fuels and reduce our fossil fuel use significantly. And they will be presenting the recommendation for their timeline for the town of East Hampton to each board member. They'd like to make an appointment with each of you and discuss the recommendations and get feedback. But also I'll be sending that recommendation around to everyone as well. They discussed also an extension of gas leaf blower ban. There was, there's different talks about it. I remember Sarah Davidson had presented us with some ideas about when the leaves actually fall, as opposed to the dates of our ban. They'd like other things to be considered as well, but they did not. There's, that's still in the works in the, in the draft phases. So they'll be presenting that to us in the future as well. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Kate. So I just want to remind everybody that today is the school budget and board vote day. So please go to your local school district and vote today. Again, budget propositions and board membership is on the ballot. Amagansett School is open from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. East Hampton from 1:00 to 8:00 PM. Montauk from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. Sag Harbor from 9:00 AM this morning till 9:00 PM. I'm sorry, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Pearson High School. Springs is at Spring School from 1:00 to 9:00 PM. Wayne Scott from 1:30 to 8:00 PM at Wayne Scott School. So it's important since most of your taxes are probably related to schools, support those budgets out there and elect some good people. The LT's contract, cable franchise agreement expires at the end of the year. Tomorrow, we'll be beginning our contract negotiations with the provider. The CSCA contract is also expiring at the end of the year. And Deputy Supervisor Kathy Birkenzals and I had another meeting with the leadership of the CSCA, which is our largest union labor force within the township. They presented us with a list of issues they'd like to discuss and proposals for changes to the existing contract, including discussion about wages. That was a productive meeting and we'll continue to have those meetings until we resolve and agree upon a contract. The Community Housing Advisory Board, CHAB, will have its first meeting tomorrow. And as many know, the Community Housing Advisory Board will act much as the Water Quality Technical Advisory Board does, advising the town about expenditure of funds that are dedicated for housing from the half percent transfer tax. So we look forward to that group getting underway. Sylvie and I met with Michael Devonshire regarding Brooks Park. Michael Devonshire is a preservationist and works for a firm that does both engineering and preservation work. We wanted to discuss with him about next steps and potential grant funding as well as scope of potential services as an outside professional to help us advance the restoration and reconstruction of the Brooks Park Studio complex. Also in that meeting were some local art advocates and potential user group members who would help manage that property once it was restored. The FIMP Fire Island to Montauk Point easement packets went out on Thursday, this past Thursday, my office has been working on preparing those along with the attorney's office and outside consultant, Ern Tetriniyan from First Coastal. And had numerous discussions along the way with the Army Corps of Engineers and New York State regarding the upcoming Fire Island to Maritza's inlet project. We are trying to couple with that project to get sand replenishment on our beaches by next year instead of waiting an additional year or two. A lot of progress is made. Councilman Leese has been involved directly with the internal group as well. We've already received, again, the, the packets went, were mailed out on Thursday. We've already received four responses and an additional three inquiries from property owners with questions. So I think that does a pretty good turnaround. There are 19 properties in total that we will need to acquire easements on. And again, this is to allow the Army Corps to come in and place dredged sand from offshore. Method of a copper dredge and pumping of sand onto the beach, on the downtown beach there. Currently, we do a sand replenishment every year it's necessary along the 3,200 feet of the existing emergency stabilization project where there are sandbags made as an artificial dune. We have to cover those, keep those covered and add sand to the beach every day. Excuse me, every year. And it's been an expensive proposition waiting for this larger federally funded, at no cost to town project, over 400,000 cubic yards of sand placed on the beach. This year, our sand replenishment was roughly 14,000 cubic yards. So this is many times greater. In addition to covering the 3,200 square lineal feet of the existing project, it's expanded out on both ends for well over 6,000 lineal feet and will terminate at the bluffs at Chadmore. So we're looking to acquire those easements quickly and turn that around. There's a looming deadline to tag team with the Feeny project. And so far, you know, the property owners see the, have seen the benefit and are, I think, anxious to conclude those easement documents so that they can enjoy the additional protection and placement of each quality sand in front of their properties, but also the broader public benefit of having a viable beach down there that drives that whole resort economy for the downtown. My office, I've been working with staff. Joanne Pilgrim had felt produce townwide mailer to communicate the town board's efforts and the very many projects that we've completed and are working on. Having a little bit of trouble getting it on a, a single mailing because we've been very, very busy. So I will circulate a draft of that one. We get a little closer, but it's nearly ready to go, at least the first, the first mailing. And again, I think it's important that we do this on a regular basis so that we can keep our residents informed just the various projects and codes and whatnot that we work on here. Also, another reminder that June 10th, we will be holding the 375th Anniversary Celebration Kickoff Fair right here at Town Hall, June 10th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. We have a number of not-for-profits and school children, students coming to present various things. There will be a number of booths set up by organizations and historical talks and other presentations. So mark that on your calendars, June 10th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And today is National Love a Tree Day. So be sure to go out there and find your favorite tree and give it a big hug.
That's every day.
It's also, it's also Mimosa Day for those. And that's, and that's all I have.
I just have one more thing and I would like to offer my congratulations to Amy Vansquay for her great achievement and receiving her PhD and adding another Doc Vansquay to the family.
Yeah, thank you. She's, was influenced a great deal by this community. Decided to pursue a career in environmental science and just graduated from University of California, Berkeley, the PhD in environmental science. I'm extremely proud of her. And thanks for mentioning that.
We're all proud of her.
I have a resolution offer 2023-709. This is authorized payment for Perico Glue Gas for 2022 in an amount of $616.55.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
710 is a separate proposal for the John Behan Memorial Park and budget modification. This is proposal number 2373 for Hampton Signs in an amount of $5,466. This is for, these are, these are for, this is for the sandblasted sign. And also, that's it, we're just a sub to you. Thank you.
I think that sign will probably be naturally sandblasted too, after it's out there for a while.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
And I have Resolution 711, which is to authorize reimbursement for fingerprints. Or I guess it's fingerprinting. Whereas the town board authorizes the reimbursement to the employee Renata, Renita Guzy for the expense relating to mandatory fingerprint requirement at a cost not to exceed $88.50, be it resolved that the reimbursement be paid upon properly submitted. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
And I have Resolution 2023-712, and that's the approval of Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grant Program Application, which I discussed in my liaison report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. I'll entertain a motion to go into exec session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into exec session to discuss personnel, leases, CPF and advice of council.
Second. We also have contracts.
Contracts also? Contracts, yes. Not leases, yes, contracts. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. And it is now 1:29. Shall we reconvene at 2:15?
Sounds good.
Very good. I will send a link. Stay safe and be well, everyone.